Yeah, well, so. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today's date is August the fifth, twenty twenty four, and this is Tel City Common Council. Everybody could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. All right. First item is adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda as presented? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald. All those in favor, signify by the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item is presentation of minutes for approval. These are from your July first and your July fifteenth meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes as presented?
I don't have any changes or corrections necessarily in there, except on the July fifteenth meeting, uh, when we talked about the, uh, potential, uh, multifamily housing development. And, I mean, and you've got the word potential, but then you read through the whole thing. And on the second page, um, Scarlett Andrews said that if they do not receive the state and federal funding this year, they will try again in twenty twenty five. All I was wanting to point out is this is an application for funding.
Right.
And, um, this makes it sound like it's a done deal, in my opinion, but we just, it's a competitive application.
Right.
And my understanding is, I looked on the state's website and they'll be making decisions, I think, November the twenty first.
That's correct. Announce it, yeah.
Okay, so, um, that was the only comment I had on the minutes.
I can put something in that beginning of that paragraph on the
Proposed.
Potential and say that it's due to this, if they receive this funding.
Yeah.
Or something. So, I can, I could put something in there, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve, uh, both July first and July fifteen, uh, minutes?
With those changes.
With those changes.
Still moved.
Motion made by Phillip. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by the same eye?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item is comments to citizens. Does any citizens that like to make any comments, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the minutes, please. All right. Move on to committee and board reports. Uh, we'll start first with Board One, Larry Kleeman. And, uh, in your report, if you could give your partners and pride, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Do you want me to do that first?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Partner and Pride is the Lincoln Hills Development Corporation, elderly housing at eight twenty-four Washington Street. Uh, they've been providing twenty-four, or they do provide twenty-four apartments, uh, for income-eligible elderly and handicap residents. And, uh, a particular apartment complex has been there since nineteen eighty-one. And they, uh, they maintain it, uh, extremely well, in my opinion. So, that's my selection for the month of August. On my ward report, on July eleventh, I attended, I was invited and attended a community conversation at Ivy Tech that the Community Foundation Alliance was having, uh, to conduct a needs assessment for, I think it was a five-county area. I know it was Perry, Spencer, Vanderburgh. I can't remember all the counties, but anyway, I participated in that needs assessment, uh, session. And they were just, they were doing one of these, uh, sessions. It was a two-hour session they were doing in each county as part of their gathering information, uh, for the Community Foundation Alliance. On July twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, I participated in several activities at the four-H Fair, including, uh, working in the concession stand during the races that were going on up there, which was very interesting. Um, on July sixteenth, I did have an opportunity to watch the, uh, cops riding bicycles for fallen police officers as they, uh, they stopped at the cemetery and then proceeded down, um, Dobey Lane and down Tel Street. Uh, it was a very interesting procession. I know Mayor, you, I think you greeted them, so, but, uh, honoring fallen police officers. Um, July twenty-second, I attended the Historical Society Dinner honoring Chief Llewellyn as the, uh, Police Chief Llewellyn, as the Disregarded Citizen of the Year. On July twenty-fifth, I attended a, uh, pre-construction meeting for the new waterline and pressure-reducing valve that we're putting in, uh, along the east side of Highway sixty-six, um, between Washington Street and Way of Tel Boulevard, I guess. Uh, attended that pre-construction meeting. And that same morning, I attended a, um, uh, meeting to discuss the, um, state revolving fund, uh, lead copper line replacement timeline. And I think, Mayor, hopefully, we were, uh, supposed to get a response to that by August first, uh, establishing our timeline. Hopefully, that went out.
We, we turned it in.
Okay.
We, we gave them a response. Now, I've not, they, I don't remember seeing anything that says we.
Okay. And if I, if I recall what we were talking about.
I did see, I think I did see what you did. Did email it to the state.
Yes, but no, did we get an answer back from the state?
Oh, from the state. No, we haven't. I'm sorry.
We were targeting, I believe, with January to March, the first quarter next year.
Well, we changed.
That all had to be changed because of the audit that they would have needed on the city. They would have needed the twenty twenty-four audit, and that wouldn't have been completed till the end of February.
So, what are we going with?
We're going with this first, the, this quarter, this quarter coming up right now.
That's even better.
Yeah.
We went, we went around and around to make sure it worked out for the most, the quickest, but also, you know, financially, you know.
This way they could use our twenty, our last audit, which was for twenty twenty-two.
I know that was a question we had at the meeting, so, okay.
We got that taken care of.
Thank you. Also, on the evening of the twenty-fifth, I attended a solid waste, uh, district board meeting where the, uh, uh, solid waste board, um, refused, uh, to send out the forty-five-dollar annual bills. And then, it's my understanding, they voted at the end of the meeting to dissolve the solid waste district board. I don't know, Mayor, you or Mr. Finley are going to report on that this evening or not.
I, I'm not, no. I was planning to.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm not sure what the status of solid waste and recycling, uh, what the status is. I also attended a public hearing that evening with the Perry County Council where, um, despite opposition, they voted to reduce the edit, um, the Economic Development Income Tax Funds, uh, by forty-two percent. And that will reduce Tel City's edit funds by three hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred dollars.
Three thirty-one or three seventy-one?
Three seventy-one, six hundred. Okay. And if you don't know what we use our edit funds for, I'll, I'll just quickly read through our, um, just for the year of twenty twenty-five. We contract with the Perry County Development Corporation, um, estimated contract for twenty twenty-five is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We put seventy thousand a year in our edit reserve account, which those funds, um, primarily, Connie, and you can correct me on this, I think we've used those funds to purchase new fire engines.
Correct. Yes.
For the fire department. Then, we have, um, eighty thousand budgeted for flood wall and stormwater improvements. We have a hundred and ten thousand budgeted for the, uh, Highway sixty-six sidewalk project, which is of great interest to me. This is a sidewalk that we're getting federal and state funds, and we're required to put matching funds to get those to construct a sidewalk from Washington Street along the east side of Highway sixty-six, from Washington Street to Way of Tel Boulevard. And for, we've talked about, talked about, talked about for a long, long time, uh, the importance of having a sidewalk up Highway sixty-six, where people now walk along the shoulder of the road or out in the middle of the road, or whatever. So, um, if we have to reduce our edit funds, um, I hope that doesn't jeopardize that project.
Well, Larry, what could happen with that is if we don't have the funds, we, we could, um, ask the end up to remove the project, but we will have to pay for all the engineering work that had been done at that point out of our own pocket. Same was on Tel Street. We have, we have to reimburse that.
Yeah.
That's worst case.
We, uh, we have then, uh, two hundred thousand budgeted for improvements, maintenance, and equipment for city facilities. That's for a variety of things, including parks, and I assume some of that is for the proposed sports complex. Is that correct?
The majority, yes.
Majority of it. Um, we have sixty thousand budgeted for paving projects. And ju- just FYI, I mean, we, we've been really, really fortunate in being able, uh, through the mayor's initiative, applying for community crossing grants, and we've been very, very fortunate in receiving those grants. But we have to provide matching funds in order to receive those grants. Just to give you an example, it's not like we pave streets every few years. Uh, currently, the street that runs in front of my house is being paved. Literally, the equipment showed up today. I've lived there for twenty years. It's never been paved since I've lived there. My neighbor, Rick Hess, has lived there thirty-six years. He tells me it's never been paved since he's lived there. So, once every thirty-six years, I don't think it's too often on paving streets. And if this edit tax is reduced by the three hundred, nearly three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, it's going to affect how many streets that we can pave, period. Um, we use, we have fifty thousand budgeted for streetscape improvements, which I think, again, we've been approved for a national and state funding for the Tel Street project from Twelfth Street to Main Street. Correct?
Tel Street from Twelfth to Main, yes.
From Twelfth to Main, I'm sorry. We budget forty-five thousand dollars a year for the operation of our Tel City Economic Development Commission. They operate a revolving loan fund program, primarily. Um, we budget forty-five thousand dollars for various projects and professional services. And, I'm sorry, the Economic Development Commission, uh, the streetscape improvement was separate. We've got a separate fifty thousand budgeted for Tel City, or for Tel Street. So, anyway, a three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar reduction in twenty twenty-five of our edit funds is going to cause a significant impact to the city of Tel City. And, um, this is being implemented by the Perry County Council. They basically gave the city little to no notice. The mayor received an email, um, and, um, the Perry County Council's meeting, again, tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon, I guess, four o'clock, I think, is their scheduled meeting, uh, to consider the, um, final adoption of this, um, income, uh, edit income tax reduction. And, uh, I would hope that, uh, at the very least, people in Tel City would oppose that because it is, it is, um, in my mind, a very unfair, uh, reduction of, um, income. These are income taxes, not property taxes. They're income taxes. So, people that earn income pay this tax. The total tax is a dollar and forty cents. That they have a number, and the edit tax is a portion of that. So, anyway, um, I have been, um, monitoring the paving and sealing going on, especially in my ward. I did notice, Mayor, I just wanted to mention this, and I, I, I know it's potentially a significant amount of work, but Petzoloxi Street between Ninth and Tenth, that hill.
It's, we submitted that for, I think we submitted actually from Tenth Street to Dead End, which would be flood wall in the July application.
Okay. Okay, because it's, it's.
I think we did. I don't know if we made the cut or not. It was close towards the end, but I think it's on there.
There.
I'll get you all a list of that. I'm sorry, didn't think to. July, that was last week, or week four last, rather, it was a pretty hectic, busy week, and we all were getting it done and hurried, and I'll, I'll email that out.
Okay.
It's not approved. They're just submitted.
There's some, I mean, there's some erosion problems or settling problem, I mean, curbs and gutters and.
Yeah, that's not part of the fixing, but if we, we won't be notified of award, if we are awarded till November, maybe December. Last year, it was December, I think. I, I don't recall, but they won't even be able to start that paving until the spring, early summer twenty twenty-five anyways. So, if, but again, we got to make cuts somewhere. We may not be able to, to do a lot of stuff. We'll just have to see.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right.
Ron made a reasonable request earlier in the meeting that, that we should be working together. What, what, what opportunities have we had to work together other than to say yea or nay?
None. None, Mike. I, I mean.
Exactly. It's not, uh, no, what's, what's your input?
You know, it's just. And we made, and the mayor made that suggestion at the public hearing. You know? So, now, let's, let's talk about this.
They're unmoved.
No. No.
It's unfortunate, and I hope by shedding some light on that, maybe it'd make a difference. I don't, I don't know what else to do. I can't make someone come to me and talk. I can only, you know, have an open mind and keep my phone handy and check emails and make myself available.
Open mind and open door.
It's important for the people, especially the citizens of Tel City, to know that the proposed action results in three, nearly three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of edit funds.
That's this year. Or next, or twenty twenty-five, sorry.
Twenty twenty-five.
But they could, like I asked the question, they actually could come back to the well until it runs dry. They can go back twenty twenty-six, take the rest of it if they want. Then we have none. It could happen.
Yeah. So.
I was hoping they'd kind of, not just, I was hoping they, you know, slowly do it, not just slash it down here, but.
Gives you a chance to plan if you need.
I know this is a little off topic, but my concern, which I did have, I do, you're required to file a three-year edit plan. I just filed that three-year plan in January of, of this year. They had a copy of that on file out there in the, in the assess, or the auditor's office. They knew what our intentions and money, where we were going to put it, what it was going to go towards, planned, but I, I just wish there would have been, courtesy of a phone call or email, or stop by and say, hey, let's, what can we do to work with you? That's just my, my biggest issue, that they don't have to call me. That's their choice.
Chris, can I say something?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll behave.
Talk loud or come up to the microphone.
Phillip, you and Brian are their cohorts. I think you need, that meeting's tomorrow evening. You need to get ahold of those people and talk to them and tell them what this is going to do to Tel City.
They may be cohorts, but I think independently.
Okay.
I will be out there tomorrow.
That, that's good, but I think you need to.
I don't, I, I, I go to a beat of a different drummer. I do what Brian wants to do, don't I, guys? I don't.
Well, I, I think you need to talk to them and give them your opinion, because look what this is going to do to Tel City. Not only Tel City, eighty-three thousand for Calton and eighty-three thousand for them. What's it going to do up there? I mean, they're going down the river as it is. Think what that's going to do. And Troy, same way. But you all need to talk to them. Not that it'll do any good, but give them your opinion.
I, I like carrying an olive branch. I've been beat with one before a lot of times. But I don't carry an olive branch. I mean.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate it.
We had speakers the other night, you know. It was convincing. I, I don't, I don't see, other than just take it or leave it, I don't see them moving.
You know, and there's, there's, there's two other things I'll just add to this, and I, that I'll shut up and you can make your report, Ron. They, they, I mentioned at the meeting that the, 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 the total tax rate is a buck forty, and they're just juggling around funds within that buck forty, which they're reducing the edit funds, edit funds by forty-two percent and moving that money to three other categories. Two things. Uh, a couple of years ago, the total tax rate was a buck eighty. So, when they paid the jail off, they reduced that, that was when Luke Thomas was on the county council. They reduced it from a buck eighty to a buck forty, okay? The maximum tax rate that you can have is two fifty. And again, that's an income tax, so the more income you make, the more taxes you pay, which I think is a progressive way. Councilwoman Harding said that, um, at a buck forty, Perry County's tax rate is higher than, I think she said sixty, sixty or sixty-six other counties. What I don't know, and I'm going to ask this tomorrow night if I get an opportunity, is how she compared that because, remember, this is an income tax. So, Perry County is paid on your workforce. Perry County has a workforce of, I think, about seventy-five hundred. So, if you had a workforce, say, of fifty thousand people, makes sense your rate would be lower. You'd generate more income. You don't need a buck forty, you know? So, I think that needs to be taken into consideration.
Compare apples to apples.
Compare apples to apples, exactly. And given the fact that we were at a buck eighty a few years ago, I think, I figure, or somebody figured, you know, if we bumped it from a buck forty to a buck sixty or a buck sixty-three, we'd state they could put money where they want to put it, and the edit fund would remain the same, you know? There'd be no losses. But that isn't what is proposed, so, I'll shut up.
Well, when, when David said, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you communicate? No response, unmoved. We don't have to. That's the reason. Because like Chris said, they can do whatever they want. I hate to be so discouraging, but.
Well, I understand. All right. Brian's got a happy report on.
Well. Thanks a lot, guys. Okay, uh, I, real quickly, I did not make the LEPC meeting. I had a work conflict with, at work, so I didn't make that one. Uh, my partners in pride for August are Mike and Rita Mahoney at eight oh one thirtieth Street. And, uh, I called them last night and congratulated them.
I didn't know his first name until you just told me that. Rita Mahoney, Mike.
Didn't you know?
We call him, uh.
Timba.
Timba, yeah. I didn't know his.
As far as, uh, Joel Safer Park, uh, actually, when I, I took tutti her sign out there, she had a good bit that you brought up about a fence, we talked about last meeting a little bit by the road. So, I drove out through there a couple of times this week, and I kind of got an eyeball on it. And, and I think we probably ought to do something right by the curb, right where the playground's at, sure. I could see where a kid could come darting across that road.
Sure, especially behind a vehicle, if it relevance in.
Good point.
And it's something that, well, Steve, uh, in the parks is aware of, and I don't remember if that was in his budget or not, but it's not a big number, but.
Maybe something we can do yet this year out of his budget. We'll have to see.
We could probably use that funds for that.
This year?
You could, because under the.
Who's always going to say that?
Under the, the city facilities, the two hundred thousand, it could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see.
And basically, they, they did get Twenty-Second Street paved, as we talked, when you guys were talking in the previous meeting about, uh, between Mozart and Franklin that was paved, and my neighbors are happy because I thought they were going to lynch me this morning at five thirty. But they, they, uh, they, uh, they cooled down pretty quick, and I told them, you know, wake up, have a cup of coffee. So.
Coffee with a soundtrack.
They're happy now that their street's paved, so, I believe that's it, Mayor.
All right. Phillip. Board three.
Yes. Not much tonight. I've listened to a lot of county council meetings. I skipped over their part where Larry was talking. No, I'm just skipping.
You couldn't skip where the part where I was. I never shut up, so.
I know.
I'll admit it.
You just muted it.
It was good stuff.
I'll admit my fault sometimes. I'm sorry.
But, uh, yeah, um, so those meetings were interesting, and then, uh, Partners in Pride will be Lighthouse Storage. Um, they fixed out, up the building there. Werners Grocery Market, uh.
Franklin and Twelfth.
Yeah. Put some money into that place to, and it makes the whole neighborhood look nicer, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, Phillip. Board four, Mike Finley.
It's getting harder to pick. There, there's so many, even after that storm, a two-day storm of rain and high winds, the citizens got out and cleaned up Ward Four nicely. But I went with, uh, David and Barbara Boost at fourteen twenty-eight and Ninth. It's an older home, but I was determined to find an older home like that that's been, kept up nice and well-groomed.
That's great.
And, uh, other than the solid waste and edit funds meetings, I did observe the bed race from about fifteen feet in there, next door to our shop.
You had a good view.
Yeah.
He's got a crow's nest over there.
Yeah.
So, is this year, you and Kathy going to watch the entertainment in the beer garden this year from up there?
We're going to perform.
Oh. There you go.
Mike's going to yodel as the opening act.
Eventually, we'll have a dinner up there for us.
There you go.
Yeah.
That'd be nice. That's it? All right. Uh, Councilman at large, Gerald Aickley.
My partners in pride is Tammy and Wayne Sprinkle at sixteen forty-eight Ninth. Not only do they keep their property clean, Wayne and Tammy both volunteered, and they keep Saint Mary's Cemetery. They're over there picking up flowers and limbs and trash all the time. Especially after a storm, they do that. And if they, if a grave, it's, needs some dirt or something, Wayne tries to get somebody with a tractor to put that in there. And, I mean, he's, he's pretty proud of that. I mean, if, like, the big storm, they'll be over the next day. He says he spent three hours all day picking up stuff after the storm.
Well, I'd, I would imagine a lot of flowers and what have you, probably did blow off those.
Yeah.
Monuments and stones.
But they keep, I mean, they, they put a lot of pride into that, so, their house and lawn is always mowed, and they keep it clean.
They do.
So, I think they need recognition for what they do there. I did attend those meetings with Larry, uh, over here in the portico room, the, uh, the same two he went to, the waterline construction and that money. Did go to the edit hearing and the solid waste hearing. You know, we can only boast our opinion. I, I don't think there's enough folks there to stop it. I think it's going to go through. But, you know, it's going to, it's going to hurt Tel City drastically. It's really going, I mean, Calton can't afford to lose eighty-three thousand dollars. Troy's going to lose four thousand. You know, they only had ten, now they're going to lose, have four. And as previously stated, we're going to have to cut somewhere out that edit plan somewhere, unless they change. I, I hope they do, but it seems like it falls on deaf ears to me. They, they, they just, they got it set, and they're going to do it. So, we, we'll work with whatever we got to work with.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's all I got.
All right. Any statements or comments from the city attorney or the clerk treasurer?
I don't get a Partners in Pride, but I can tell you, after these storms, I did some driving around today, and there's so many properties in Tel City right now that people are working their butts off. I mean, it is hot, and I see people out in their yards working, mowing, pruning flowers, getting their, their places pretty for Switzer Fest. Anybody who's not from around here, or even if you are from around here, oh my goodness, just drive through Tel City right now. I mean, it's showing off right now, Tel City is.
My only report is, I'm working on budgets, and all of this controversy over the edit makes it very hard to work on budgets, to know what's gonna be budgeted for next year, where I'm gonna have to move things around.
It might just have to be a cut across the board.
Yeah.
Forty-two percent cut across the entire board and see what comes up with, on everything. I don't know.
One more thing, the, the Pat Jarville, is that his name? The regional artist guy.
Yes, Pat, yes.
We got a project going at William Tail, he designed it, it's some kind of little park. Al Cole Foundation told some money to that, so we started that last week, and it's rained every day since, so.
Well, Gerald, why don't you out there get it down a little?
I was down there, believe me.
Save on the water bill for the pumpkin.
That's right.
Right next to the pumpkin patch.
You should've had barrels catching that water instead.
Converted into a family.
No, the water department needs money, but it's gonna, it's some kind of park he designed, and it's gonna, it's, it's gotta quit raining, we can finish it. So if anybody'd like to volunteer, we would, he'll take help.
I think it's called a meditation park, isn't it?
I'm not for sure, Larry. I know it's got, we're gonna have a chain link fence and some paths with rock, and a circle with rock, paver bricks.
Yeah.
I felt kinda bad, I was only Al Cole in there, didn't know anybody, so, the retirees, you know. But they have, them employees come out of the power plant, Al Cole owns the power plant.
Oh, great.
Yeah, they still own that, and the pot lines. But I think it's a thousand or twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollars they donate. So I think Megan Fritsley's grandkids or some, there's, some of them was out there working.
Well, her husband works.
At the power plant, yeah. So anyway, it's, those are gonna be a small park, if ever quits raining, it's gonna get done.
You're great. All right, that concludes the committee and ward reports and the Partners in Pride. We don't have any old business, so we're just gonna jump right down to new business. Item A, ordinance transfer dormant funds to rainy day funds. Counsel, just for your records, if you wanna write it top, this is order number twelve sixteen. Connie, do we wanna explain a little bit, if we read it, or just go with it? Read it.
I think it'll explain it as you read it.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion?
Or I can read it.
Well, I can, I'll read this one, I'll let you get the next one. It's a little longer. Is there a motion for the first reading of ordinance number twelve sixteen?
Make that motion, second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Brian, any further discussion? All in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Orders number twelve sixteen, first reading, ordinance to transfer funds or dormant funds to rainy day funds, whereas the clerk treasurer of the city of Tel City has determined that there, that there exists a need to abolish a dormant fund and transfer the dormant funds balances to rainy day fund to continue effective and efficient stewardship of the funds for the city of Tel City, Indiana. And whereas the common council of the city of Tel City, Indiana, has determined that the request to abolish the dormant funds and to transfer the dormant fund balances to rainy day fund is necessary for continued efforts in effective stewardship of the funds of the city of.
I'm sorry, I use a lot of big words.
Indiana. Well, no, it's just, it's, it just feels like it's worded.
Repetitive.
Yeah, effective and efficient, yeah, but anyways, whereas, it has been determined that the following funds are dormant. Number one, transportation enhancement fund with a balance of eight thousand three hundred and seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Shergans Center concession funds with a balance of three thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and twelve cents. Police release slash rental funds with a balance of twelve thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-four cents. And whereas the matter considered is an open public meeting at which the public funds were invited to attend and participate, or the public were invited to attend and participate. Be it now therefore ordained, that the following funds shall be abolished and dormant fund balances shall be transferred to the rainy day fund as follows. One, transportation fund enhancement fund with a balance of eight thousand three hundred and seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Two, Shergans Center concession funds with a balance of three thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and twelve cents. Police release slash rental fund with a balance of twelve thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-four cents. Passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Tel City this blank day of twenty twenty-four. So council has first read of ordinance number twelve sixteen, is there a motion to suspend the roof for second, third reading by title only?
So moved.
Motion by Gerald, seconded by Larry, all in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading, ordinance twelve sixteen, ordinance to transfer dormant funds to rainy day funds. Third reading, ordinance twelve sixteen, ordinance to transfer dormant funds to rainy day funds. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Phil, any further discussion? All in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, that concludes item A, so we had an item B, a resolution to transfer funds. Uh, this is resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, so if you wanna write that at the top for your records, I'm gonna let Connie drive the bus on this one.
Okay, I'll just let you all know that most of this is due to budget work that I'm doing and discovering some line items that are in the red or will be in the red later in the year. This is to transfer appropriations, so those funds, those line items are not in the red. So it's res, it's resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, resolution by the Tel City Common Council to make necessary transfers between classifications within the general budget. The general fund, the Board of Works, we're gonna, I'm asking to transfer five thousand five hundred dollars from the salary street commissioner to the salary, to the street department labor salaries out of the Board of Works budget, and out of the dispatch asking out of the janitorial budget line item for five hundred and seventy dollars, and out of computer software, five thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred to police pension dispatcher coordinator for a total of five thousand five seventy. Out of the motor vehicle highway fund, out of the M V H street and alley maintenance, transfer twenty-five thousand two seventy-five to street commissioner of two hundred and seventy-five, and M V A street department labor, twenty-five thousand. And out of the law enforcement, local law enforcement fund, out of local law enforcement equipment, we're gonna transfer eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to local law enforcement, police, canine dog. And within the edit fund, transferring five thousand dollars from the edit capital reserve to the edit transfer, which is for the E D C. Because we only budgeted forty thousand last year, and then when the mayor redid his plan, we changed it to forty-five thousand. So I'm just needing to increase that to the five. And this is adopted this fifth day of August twenty twenty-four.
All right. Council resolution, as far as only one reading.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved made by Larry, is there a second? Seconded by Mike, any further discussion? All in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution stands adopted.
Okay, I'll send this down for everyone.
That does conclude everything on our new business, so jumping down to Mayor's report, as I reported in the Board of Public Works, this week is Switzer Fest week, it's my favorite week of the year for me, it's where we celebrate our heritage and we do a pretty good job at it, I think. This past Sunday, we had the bed races, one bed, Tel City Electric's bed was clocked with radar at twenty-two miles an hour, which is pretty impressive for somebody pushing a bed. I will say that, I, I was impressed, another one was either sixteen or eighteen, but in the end, Saint Hall's Church, they did win, they were the winner last year, so they're a winner for two years in a row, so congratulations to them and to all the participants in the bed race. It was a very warm afternoon, but it did help the Tel City Colored Arts make a little money by selling a lot of linen shakeups, and we're very glad they were there to help keep hydrated and cool. This week, we have the kickoff on Wednesday with opening ceremonies. Our chief of police, Derek Low, has been honored as the distinguished citizen of the year, so if you can make it, I would encourage you all to be here for that. Also that evening is the piety contest, and we actually have two Tel City Electric will be in there, Andy Hicks as a piety, challenging Sergeant David Beaver. So we have two representatives from the city, you could say, that's gonna be part of it, so be there rooting them on and cheering, should be a great event, it's a pretty huge draw, and it's also Friday night for the kids, so that's great. This on Thursday, we have the Rollins, will be honored as Business of the Year, they've been in business for a hundred and forty years, and this, they started out in eighteen eighty-four in Hallsville, Kentucky, then moved in eighteen eighty-six to Canton, had a few loca, couple, maybe a few locations there, and in the nineteen fifty-four, maybe? I think, I'm working on their PowerPoint, so that's why I'm good at these dates. I think that's what it was, that Ken Roland Senior, he purchased Heinzle Jewelry here, which is next to the bakery, and changed it to Rollins, and then upon the death of Ken's, or Jacob Senior, they consolidated all the Tel City locations, and they had another location kinda where Tel City Electric is now, and then they bought the old value dress shop and moved in there, and they've been there since nineteen seventies, maybe, I don't know, I haven't got that far on my PowerPoint yet, so it might be off a little, but congratulations to the Rollins and the family for keeping that business in this community and the great service that they provide to all of our residents. And then we go on to Switzer Fest, we've got the road run, a lot of other great events going on through the weekend, and I hope everybody has a good time with that.
Lots of live music, lots of good stuff.
While I'm mentioning Rollins, my partners in pride, as you guessed, it is Rollins. So what other partners in pride could you get than a business that's been there for a hundred and forty years? And I would tell you, Simra and Ken, Ken kept the grass, you know, out there, like, when he had the grass there, it was probably the best, like, grass in, in the whole city as far as how he kept it, but there's concrete there now, but Simba's always out there working, sweeping the sidewalk, cleaning it off, watering the flowers, and really making it a, a nice looking business on Main Street. So they're my partners in pride for this month. Lastly, I will not be at our Water Board meeting, nor the Board of Works, I'll be at an international, a conference for mayors at, in Madison, Indiana, so y'all behave.
Chris, can I have one more positive thing?
Yeah.
On a positive note, we have an election coming up. If, if we could make an impression that way on the county council, I mean, orally, not much good, but at the election, we could make some changes.
Why, we have them.
Yeah.
That's all I have under Mayor's report, is there anything else that needs to come before us, that anybody missed? All right, well, I hope everybody has a safe Switzer Fest and enjoys it, let's make it a good one, the weather looks good, buy half-bought chicken, they just quit selling them about forty minutes ago, so get one tomorrow.
Is it truly on sale for half price for county council?
No, no.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Gerald, is there a second?
Where'd that come from, Mike?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded by Mike, all in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?